Okay, everybody ready?
Yes ma'am.
I hope so.
All right.
I hope I started.
Okay, we'll double check.
Thank you.
All right, it is 4:01 on April 23rd, 2024. We will call the Kerrville City Council Workshop to Order. Any one signed up to speak?
No ma'am.
All right, thank you. We have, we'll go to item 2A, consideration and possible action, grants for small business facade improvements.
Mayor, if I could start that for us.
Okay.
I've had some discussions with the city manager about facade improvements in the downtown area to help small businesses. I understand there may be grants available for that, and I believe Mr. Hornis has more details than I.
Well, good afternoon, mayor and council. Thank you all for taking the time to come in early today to talk about some of this. So, truth be told, I came from Live Oak, Texas, and we had a kind of a very popular facade improvement program. And so, I text, I gotta text the mayor and tell her that I'm kind of pilfering from Live Oaks, but it's a real good program, real simple. And so I just kind of wanted to go through that and give you some background, and we can talk about if this is something you want to consider, ways that we can kind of curvilize that. So, what would the purpose of it be, right? And so, you know, to me, just in my cursory, is to encourage the visual improvement and enhancement of the facades, business signage, landscaping, parking for commercial, professional, and retail businesses in Kerrville. You know, geared, I think, towards that downtown. We can, we can add that. The overview of it, like, what would the things that you would want to look at? Really, when you're looking at a facade program or a visual improvement program, you're looking at the exterior of the building. You're not looking at stuff that's inside. So you're looking at awnings, windows, entrances, facades, green enhancements, or landscaping, painting, signage. We've all been to businesses where, you know, it's starting to look a little faded, right? Signage is off, maybe the neon's not blinking on that one letter, and it says a word that you're like, oh, well, don't, we gotta fix that. So it's that kind of thing. It spruces it up, it makes it look kind of, it pops it and makes it look a little newer, you know, almost brand new in a lot of cases. The way that I've seen this structured where it worked really well is we kind of had flexible design standards to not make it too onerous on folks, you know, because these are small businesses, so they don't have a lot of, a lot of money to throw towards these things. What kind of numbers? What I've seen in the past that, that worked well, a lot of signage was redone. That was kind of a big one, the signage on the facade of the building. And so there are options out there, you know, $5,000 grant, a $7,500, $1,000 grant, $10,000 grants, depending. These could be matching grants, or in the absence of, you know, a sufficient number of applicants, and you've got excess funding, could be grants that are just completely paid for through the grant. You can do these either through the tenant or the business owner, right? With the, so through the tenant, you'd have to have the business owner's approval. Through the owner, you make sure that they actually have ownership of the building before they do any of that. Make sure that folks go out and get multiple bids, right? So you want to make sure it's competitive, and it's not just their friend that's going to be putting up a sign. You probably end up with some of these things, the same business owners that end up getting some of the work, because, you know, not a lot of sign companies in town necessarily that do neon signs, or people that do awnings, things like that. You want to make sure that the project is ready to go, that they're ready to start within a certain period of time. 90 days seems like a pretty good amount, and then make sure that they finish that project within a certain period of time. Have all the clawback provisions that are going to make your legal office happy to make sure that they get the work done. And then you want to have something that kind of helps you qualify it, like some criteria. So this is just an example, right? So, this can all be worked out in any, any number of different ways, but you want to be able to look at the quality of the design and rate that. Is it consistent with the businesses in the surrounding area? Or is it way far off, and do you want that? Does it matter? And I think those are case by case. Are they, do they actually improve the aesthetic of the building? Because sometimes you'll get submissions where it's like, I don't know that that, that doesn't make any sense. It's not going to improve the site, it's not going to improve the look of it. That doesn't happen very often. And is it going to help revitalize the city of Kerrville? Is it going to be a good thing for, for Kerrville doing these upgrades? How could you fund it? Well, you could do an allocation through the general fund and have a line item in there for that. You could make an ask to the EIC to see if they want to put in an annual budget that would help accommodate that, do a test case maybe for a first year. If you're going to focus it on downtown specific, there is an allocation that you could request to come through TERS funding, or a combination of all three of those things. So, I didn't really want to pull examples from town right now, because you're kind of putting people on blast on like, hey, here, here's an example of something that needs to, needs to get upgraded. But if, you can imagine areas in town where you drive by and you're like, hey, boy, that would look nice if they would repair their awning. Or that would look nice if their parking lot wasn't so broken up. Maybe if they restripped it and they finished a little bit of the asphalt, it would look a whole lot nicer. And in my history of kind of running through programs like that, what I've seen is that small businesses are just that. They are, they're doing their day to day. They don't have a whole lot of time to work on, oh yeah, it'd be great to do this. So this little grant incentive sometimes helps to get them over the hump of like, oh hey, the city was willing to help. You know, we could do a 50-50 share, they could focus a little more attention on it. It spruces it up. But several of you are small business owners, you, you know that it's hard to focus your attention on this, and your dollars that are hard earned, hard to sometimes put it towards something where you're like, that's nice, but that's a want and maybe not a need for my business right now. So this would help kind of cover that gap. And so what we wanted to do was just bring that to y'all, see if that's something you'd want to consider putting into the upcoming budget, and then we could workshop this again on what would the mechanics of that look like, and talk that through. And with that, I will turn it back over. Out of there.
Just a quick question, wouldn't just be downtown?
Doesn't have to be. This is the purview of the, the board. I think there's small businesses all throughout the city, right? And so, you know, and we were, Live Oak was a small place. We were five and a half square miles, is a quarter of the size of this town. And we limited it to businesses, right? So, in theory Ikea could have come in and been like, we want help with our sign. They didn't need it. But again, it was like, who was going to apply, right? So typically, we'd had enough funding for everybody who applied to probably be awarded the grant if they met all the requirements. So, it could be anywhere. It could be downtown, it could be the entire city. Throughout town is a, is a, is a good plan.
I would say it's something that you should definitely look further into. Counsel?
What'd you say Judy?
I said I think it's something that the council should definitely look into further.
Yeah, I mean, I have a couple of questions. Is the Main Street Advisory Board, is that a nonprofit?
Uh, our Main Street Board? No, no ma'am.
No? Because I'm concerned about grant money coming from the city, going to beautify somebody else's private property. I, I mean, I would think that the limitations for our grants would be to streets, sidewalks, lighting, that kind of thing, that kind of beautification for downtown. I just, I, I do have a concern about the, the city money being budgeted for private property enhancements. So that's just my...
So, I can agree with that. So you were, I guess what you're going with is more of something that can enhance everybody in that area.
The look of, yes, yeah.
The main infrastructure, that's just not accommodating just one.
Yeah, and I thought that that's what the TERS, the original TERS was for. TERS number one was to help with some of that in the downtown area.
Yes ma'am.
So are we looking at more than just the money that's been allocated from the TERS?
So this would be, this would be beyond what the TERS scope you're discussing. So in, in this makeup, this would, this would go towards that which you're, you're saying you might not want to help in terms of like going to the business. So this would be facades of the buildings. This would be, you know, stripings of the parking lot, all interior to that space that is owned privately.
And I can jump in there too. I think we are also limited on our TERS fund because of the boundary that's set by it. So if we were to use any of those funds, correct me if I'm wrong, but it has to be used also within the TERS.
Within, all within that area, yeah. The TERS fund kind of complicates it a little bit, right? So if it's a project that is, if, if the, if the program is tailored towards the downtown district, then, then it's not. If it's tailored towards citywide, then you'd have limitations on where you could use the TERS dollars.
And Michael, ma'am?
Yeah.
So, mayor, council, so the other thing too, and this is kind of just the 300,000-foot view. You know, we have EIC, you know, EIC has done some things with, you know, with funding. Really, we kind of looked at it from the city perspective as how do we kind of kick this off and be, we'll call it the facilitators in this, and then bring those folks in together to collaborate and say, where can the funding best be applied? Whether that's in the TERS district through TERS, or EIC, you know, I, I say EDC, but EIC component, and then use small portions of their funding that can then support the business retention and expansion, you know, the sustainability component of, of Kerrville versus kind of just all the new stuff. So there's, there's a million different ways that we can kind of do it. This is really the 300,000 stratosphere foot view of, of just the, the idea and the concept. So, yes, from a taxpayer perspective, there's different avenues that we can use to, to make sure that it's funded appropriately.
Yeah.
We, we use something similar in Mont Belvieu as well.
The, the funding that we've seen in the past for this has come from EDC funds, not from general funds, right?
Going into this item, I thought we were considering grants outside of our own revenue streams. I don't know if anybody else on council thought that. That's what I understood.
Oh, like the shoeing grants from the state?
Right.
I under, I thought that Megan was working on that.
Yeah.
Well, we're constantly working on that, but that's not what the focus of this was for today.
Okay. Yeah, the, these are, these, these types of grants, you know, are very city-specific. Each city sometimes will have their own. And they're, they're designed to kind of break through some of the red tape that a lot of some small business owners, you know, may face, you know, in it. You know, again, it's not for them to go replace a stove or anything like that. It's, it's for the curb side appeal, you know, the, the look, you know, how, how does, you know, the city want it? And you can put, you know, you can define what that looks like. Like, for example, a great example would be is we have a dark sky ordinance, right? And let's say there's a business that doesn't have dark sky lighting, but this could help them get into the, you know, the step of...
Right, that's what, that's what, what my vision is.
Correct. That's how, that's really what this is used for. Because you can put parameters and limitations on that, so that's where the qualifications come in.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think that we should be painting people's buildings and, you know, that sort of thing. I think it should be restricted to repairs and enhancements of whether it's, you know, the 25 feet of island greenery for every four parking spaces, that kind of look, or, you know, trees that line the center of the road, or that kind of, that kind of enhancement. Not necessarily fixing the lighting on somebody's sign. I just, I just don't see that money. Well, I think we'd, we'd just have some resistance to that.
Okay, sure. We can put some stuff together.
No, that's just me though.
Did y'all do in Live Oak, Michael, 100%, 50%? A lot of skin in the game from the property owner or the tenant?
It depended on the year. And it, and it had a cap. So if the project was $10,000, there was a cap of like $5,000 that would be a match. Sometimes though, if the project came in under budget and there was sufficient dollars left in the remainder of the year, and we thought we could kind of get through the year, the E, the EDC over there, that would be up to their purview to decide to fully fund it if they wanted to. You know, like it was a $3,500 sign or something like that, and they wanted to fully fund it, knowing they had a pretty good buffer left in their budget. It wasn't going to impact them.
One little bit background, the Main Street program, when it started, had a component like this. It was administered by the Main Street program, but it was funded largely by the Texas Historical Commission, if I'm to remember correctly. I think, I think helping small businesses is good, it might be good for us to find grants to fund it. I think that might make people feel better about helping small businesses improve the appearance of their building. Also, when the Main Street Board began, I could walk from the print shop to what was the post office and not pass a building that was occupied with a tenant. And so, it was helpful at that time. It may be helpful again. I'm, I'm happy to continue to look at it, but...
I was wondering, is this something that the Main Street Board can be involved in? Or is it outside?
No, it certainly could be that. It, it's, it all depends on if you want to, if you want to pursue it, and if you do a, if you do a citywide program, then I would suggest it be not the Main Street Board, since they're, they have a limited, TERS or, TERS or Main Street have that boundary. So, you know, if, if funding were to come from outside, then I would say city council could review those and do that. If funding were to come from EIC, for example, then I would think EIC would be the body you would, you would want to be reviewing those. Staff would internally review those before they went up.
Was there consensus, council, to look into it further and?
Sure.
See what, see what might be available and?
So we got time, so I, I think what we can do is, you know, as, as we're rolling into budget, we'll look at other programs, other grant opportunities that are out there to help fund it, and see what those, see what's available. And I'll start, we'll start there.
Okay.
And then we'll come back to y'all with what we found.
Okay.
Awesome, thank you.
All right, thank you, Michael.
Yes ma'am.
Q B. I don't know who's bringing this to us.
I am going to very briefly and, and very quickly introduce the team from Burn Construction here. We have Mr. Tony Battle, who you all know. He has presented before you on the first two early work packages. And we are excited to be here tonight because we are here to talk about the GMP. So we've gone, okay, Brenda, we've gone from SD to DD to CD to GMP. So we have, we have gone through the acronym soup. And, and so Mr. Battle is here tonight to kind of walk through where we are, where we're at with our budget, and what we can expect moving forward with the process. So, Mr. Battle? Yeah, please.
Perfect.
Right there on that.
Okay. All right, mayor, city council, good afternoon. Exciting milestone for us. And so, I'm going to go through this presentation, and then we are going to ask for council action during your meeting this evening. I won't be here, I have my own council meeting in Bandera, but be represented by Mr. Holcomb here, if you have any questions during that time. But feel free to stop me if you have questions as we go through this presentation. So here we are. Here is our pre-construction design-build process. So there's a lot going on there, and it's been a lot of work. But you can see the check marks. We've gone from program and concept all the way through to our GMP, which we're excited. That is a guaranteed maximum price for the project. Obviously, we've worked with your stakeholders all the way through this process to make sure that everything they wanted implemented into the building is, is in the building. And so, so far, it's been a very good and collaborative process. So to talk just briefly about numbers, the guaranteed maximum price is, is made up of, of three items. That's the early work package that we came to you in December, I believe, to get approval for. And then the second early work package was in January. And now here we are with the remaining building package, which is the 23, 23,300-ish. And then the, the total project guaranteed maximum price for construction is the 39,565, 5, 359. So, that is inclusive of the ancillary building that we, that we've been talking about for the support building. So that is inclusive and in the, the GMP.
All right, when you say, is this the building that we approved last time with the storage?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, so that is inclusive of the GMP.
Okay.
There's a list of alternates below. What alternates are, are, those are items that we have designed, but we're not sure whether we're going to be able to afford those or not. So they're, they're, they're in the design. And if we have the savings as we progress through construction, which we hope to, then we will implement those into the project. So I'll go through those just quickly. The covered parking, so those are canopies for, for your, your vehicles. And we're working through a process to price those. There's all different kinds, and so we don't have good pricing for those right now, but we're working through that process. A secured Sally Port, that's 88,000. The bioretention of 25,000, and then the permeable paving at 85,000. So those are the alternates that, that we will, yes ma'am?
Where's the, the storage?
It was included in the 39?
It is included in the 39?
The storage building, support building is included in the 39.
Okay.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you.
Yeah, we took, took that out of the alternates, moved it up into the GMP. Okay, so then we wanted to go back and look at your bond requirements. So we thought it was really important to make sure that everything that constituents wanted in the bond is actually made it into the building. And so we've been double-checking that all the way through the process. But here, just to go through these, so you can see that they're all included in the building. So police dispatch, training, the EOC, community rooms, those are all included. The police asset support building, that is part of the bond requirement, so we wanted to make sure it is in the GMP. Municipal courts, fire admin. There is expansion shelf space for the police department that's programmed into this building, and then your IT department. So we've checked all the boxes. So you can feel good that your constituents, their requirements are included in the project. So there was some questions about storage and the amount of storage. Anytime you're building a building, it's smart to make sure that there's enough storage, right? We've all built houses before, or moved into houses, some older than others, and you, where's all the storage, right? So we want to make sure there's adequate storage. So we just did a quick analysis here. All these pink boxes here are storage that's just scattered throughout the building. So there's ample storage in your building, you can take comfort in that. There's approximately 4,200 square feet of storage throughout the building. So that's more than, should be more than adequate. There's also adequate flex space for your, for your different departments to grow. That's all in the building. Okay, so here's just a brief look at the schedule. This is the same thing for continuity every time. We've tried to show you the same, the same milestones, but these are the milestones through design that we've been through all the way from program to where we are now for, for release, for full scopes of work. So, this was a progressive process where we were fast-tracking construction. So we've, we came to you and asked you for those early release packages. And so you can see from the two aerial photos at the bottom of the page there that construction has obviously started, and we've got a, a pad built out there. We have, most of the utilities are underway, and we have a big milestone on Friday. We'll be pouring our first big concrete pour. So that's a big milestone for us, but that process has allowed us to get started, you know, prior to having a GMP. So, so kudos to everybody for that, and here we are this evening, asking for release on the, the full scope of work. So again, a little more on schedule. This is very high level. Our schedule is extremely detailed and multiple, multiple pages that we're not going to bore you with through the construction duration. But this is, just to, to manage expectations, our construction duration, we show a substantial completion for construction in the second quarter of '25. I want to be very clear that that is for construction. So there's a substantial completion for construction. There will be other things that have to be done in the building, furniture fixtures and equipment, commissioning of the different systems. This building has a lot of very specialized systems in it. Those will all have to be commissioned before you finally have someone sitting at their desk and ready to work. So second quarter will be our construction substantial completion, and then there'll be some period of time after that before, you know, you're fully moved in and that building is, is, is working as it's intended.
Now, based on what we're expecting to put in that building, what estimated timeline do you have for that?
For the, for the duration after, so we're not going to be in complete control of that, but usually FFNE and commissioning can take anywhere from six weeks to two months to really commission all those systems. You've got dispatch in there, that's got to be commissioned very carefully to make sure it's all operational and working. And so there's going to be some period of time there, probably, I would say, no more than, than, than two to three months max. But, but there's going to be that period of time.
Okay, thank you.
I just don't want anybody to think on Q2 of, of '25, everyone's going to be sitting at the desk because it, that doesn't quite work that way.
That's fair.
Okay, so these are the boxes that you've seen, again, for continuity, just to show you the same thing every time. But early work package one was completed in November, approved in December. Two was December and January, and here we are with the GMP completed in March, and asking for action here tonight. And so I'd be remiss if I did not speak about the teamwork and the effort, the collaborative effort that it has taken to get us to this point. So, design build is a very progressive delivery method, especially a fast-track design build. And so, kudos to council for pushing this project through with that delivery method. But that would not be successful without an unbelievable staff that you have. And we've worked with everybody from the chiefs to the assistant city managers, Friesen Nichols, your public works, your engineering department, IT and courts, and everybody has been so willing to be led through this process. We have seen very little resistance, which is what we usually struggle with the most, is trying to pull people along through this kind of progressive process, and they've just been unbelievable to work with. So you've got a, you've got a great staff, and I just want to give kudos to, to them for, for being so collaborative, because it, we just wouldn't be here today with such an efficient building. And the other thing I think you can take great pride in is you have delivered a, a very efficient project for your constituents, where we've used every dollar available to make sure that you're going to have a state-of-the-art facility. So I appreciate that, and thank you for allowing us to, to take you through that process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and it doesn't stop, it doesn't stop here. I'll be back to you, I'm sure, to update you as we go through construction. So it's exciting times from this point forward, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to take those now.
All right, anybody?
Where does this put us on our current budget? Where, are we on target with where we were estimating our GMP to be, and with the remainder that we have in the bond? What else, how on budget, I guess, are we with the project?
With the GMP, we're right where we intended to be. Michael, do you want to speak about the overall budget?
I think to sum up what we talked about last time, you know, we, we have asked to place that buffer in there, right? To make sure that we get that accessory storage building in there. And then as we move through the process, we will continually try to, we will continually work to sort of value engineer and, and, and draw down those contingencies that we can. There are contingencies for a reason though, right? And so we may use those. But we're, but we're there on our end and on their end. So I think the one, the one thing that you might see coming through is when we get our FFNE budget finalized, which we're, we're, we're there, we're going to ask Burn to give us an estimate for, for their services to do the FFNE. That's to come in after construction's complete and turnkey all the furniture. And we're also going to look at doing that ourselves. And so if we, if we do ask Burn to do that, we would come back in with a change order, and it would push that, we've called it on below the line and above the line, below the line being us, and above the line being Burn. We would push that FFNE budget from us up to them. And so it all depends on if there's significant cost savings we can, we can find if we do it internally, then, then likelihood is that we do it. But if it's similar cost, we'll likely push that up for continuity sake. There's lots of efficiencies if, if those numbers are similar. But we're, yes, we're, where we are on our budget, yes sir.
And they've been involved in the whole process, so, right?
Yes, they have.
And doing that would make sense if it were. So just to be clear then, we're getting everything we need and that, the department's need, and we're also on target with our budget.
Yes sir.
We're all good there, okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Michael. Thank you, team, and we just appreciate what you guys are doing for us. And it just gets more exciting as we get closer, so thank you so much.
Y'all want to come out at 2 o'clock on Friday morning? 2 a.m.? 2 a.m.
2 a.m.
Yes ma'am.
And what are we going to do at 2 a.m.?
We watch the concrete pour. It's slightly more exciting than watching paint dry, but...
Okay.
And just so you know, all of...
Can we take a rain check?
You can, yes ma'am. All of the residents who live around it are notified when there are activities that are, you know, louder in scope, more involved in scope. And so the Burn team has done a real good job at, at, you know, creating those relationships with the neighbors, with the apartment complexes, the homes behind it, the sheriff's office, and K-Pub.
Good.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you all.
All right. I believe we are ready for executive session, Council. And I believe we are going into executive session. Shelley, do you want to read those three for us?
Certainly. City's ongoing discussion with Headwater Groundwater Conservation District with respect to the city's groundwater permit, 551.071. Liberty in Action Network, Terry Hall and Rachel Vickers, plaintiffs versus City of Kerrville, Texas, defendant, civil action number 5.24-CV0-00403, U.S. Court for the Western District of Texas, San Antonio Division, 551.071. Requirements pertaining to landowner petitions for release of land from the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction, 551.071.
All right, Council, someone like to make a motion to go into executive session?
Uh, Mayor, I move to go into executive session pursuant to section 551.071 for items 3A, 3B, and 3C.
Second. We have a second. All in favor, right hand please. All right, it is 6:01 and we have adjourned from the executive session. We are back into regular session for the workshop. At 6:01, we will close the regular session for the workshop and there is no report to be made from executive.